Regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town in McCainan for Tuesday, February twenty one, two thousand twenty three at eight thirty one A M. We have an item to add to the agenda for the new Canadian rank staffing expenses and make a motion to add this to the agenda.
Second.
All favor, I.
Bye. Kevin, can we just add a selectman's comments also to the agenda?
You want to move? Sure.
I'll make a move a motion to add selectmen's comments, not only this meeting, but all meetings going forward. So we don't have to have this conversation every time. So.
Second here.
All favor.
Hi.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes of our regular meeting on February seventh. Any comments or corrections?
None here.
I move you approve the minutes.
Second.
All favor. I don't see any members of the public here. You have anybody on from Zoom land? Anyway, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics, schedule review and or vote comments may be submitted electronically to V O S distribution at new Cana C T dot gov and they'll be read in the course of the meeting if there are any. That brings us to Lexi. Lexi, good morning. Are you there?
Morning. How are you? I had a last minute out of town situation, so I'm visiting you through Zoom. But the farmers and the vendors are excited to get back to the market and we'll be starting in just sixty one days. So it's coming along fast.
Well, great. Thank you for joining us and I understand. So you were happy with last season in the lumberyard for the that the second season?
Yes, we settled into the second season. People are finding us more at the railroad station. And they're actually having off the train to buy from us. So that is wonderful. They're supporting the train and they're supporting, you know, not using your vehicles and environmental. So that will that they're using the train to come see us. And we're hoping to expand the market a little bit to the winter season by allowing the vendors to do a drop off at the market site at ten o'clock between December and March. That was kind of a happy medium between having a loop to farmers market and not having anything at all. So the extra income in the winter will be it'll be good for the vendors.
Go spend on that.
We added a trailer last year. I'm sorry?
Uh, could you expand on that? What you're you're planning to do a Saturday's from this off season pickup from November to March?
We'd like to be able to allow the members to meet at the parking lot at the clock like usual for farmer's market. Only instead of setting up, they would only be meeting their customers for pre-ordered pickup.
I see. So that's new and something that is that is that done at other farmers markets?
Uh, other farmers markets have year round availability. So this was kind of a happy medium between an actual winter market where they would have to set up and worry about customers coming and not coming and product availability. Pre-ordered during the week online and then on Saturdays, they would only meet the customer to pick up their orders.
What time do they meet for a brief period in the morning? When she's ten o'clock?
Did you say ten?
The market hours are ten to two.
Oh, so they'd come for customers to come and pick up pre-ordered items. Any questions for Lexi?
I do. I just wanted to add that we did many years ago, try a winter market over at the nature center. And it would it was successful, but not quite at the level that that the farmers and everybody had wanted. So this seems like a compromise where everybody can get some of their their items that they're looking for from the farmer's market, but not with setting up the full blown market for the winter.
How do people or how do people order their produce or products? Is it on a website or do they go direct to the the farmers and they then they turn up on that Saturday?
They'll get a weekly email list of of with links to their stores, online stores. And then they can order individually through the vendors directly. And then the vendors will put the orders together and Saturday morning at ten o'clock. The customers will come and meet the vendors that they ordered from who they ordered from, and they would pick up their orders and go. Um, it would be weather depending. So if the storm was to come, parking lot obviously would not be feasible. So we would cancel that Saturday during weather conditions.
Hey, any further questions?
Not here.
I move that we approve the request from Market Master. Lexi Gazy to hold the summer new Canaan Farmers Market at the lumberyard parking lot on Saturdays and from April to November. And for the off season pickup as just described from November twenty fifth through March twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Thanks for joining us, Lexi, and good luck with the new season.
Thank you very much. If I can also mention, we are excited to do a collaboration with the Carriage Barn Arts Center on March fifth. We hope everybody can join us for a light buffet brunch and view the final viewing of the photography exhibit, which is really exciting. And that's on our website, new Canaan Farmers Market dot net.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thanks for joining us.
Have a good day. Happy spring.
That brings us back to Tiger and Tiger has a long laundry list here of things.
Right. Uh, so good morning. The uh, sorry, I'm from Zoom. Um, the uh, the first item is sewer relining project um, for a portion of our sewer, three about three hundred feet um, of an area between Saint John's Place to Locust Avenue. Um, that sewer was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, and then we discovered a an issue while uh, TVing it um, for some upcoming projects. Um. So we went out to three bidders, the three bidders that um, bid on our previous relining project that was very successful on the on the stretch on Main Street from the firehouse down to East Avenue. We received only one bid, um, and it was from the low bidder from the previous uh, from the previous work. National Water Main. He came in at twenty seven thousand nine twenty. We added a contingency of forty two hundred dollars for a total of thirty two one twenty. Um, the funds are currently available in our uh, in our budget. We actually had monies left over from the previous relining, which allowed us to come and do this work. Uh, and um, we think it's a very worthy project and we'd like to move forward.
I agree. One question. Um, does this come from the major maintenance fund of the shore?
Yes.
It wasn't appropriated for this purpose for relying.
It was appropriated for relining of Main Street. This is where, you know, and we're right there.
Okay.
So Tiger, does this connect to the uh, the original um, so the lining that you put through previously on Main Street or?
Well, they all connect eventually, but they're not directly connected. There's a short span between the two, but um, excuse me, um. But it is the exact same line that we relined um just a short while ago.
Do you expect that it'll you'll need to, you know, continue further with that same line? Given that it's, you know, the same age and might have the same. What was the problem that I don't?
This actually has a sag in it. So it has a sag and a kind of a disconnect. And during uh, during um, unseasonable weather, you know, rain, you can actually see water flowing. And this is where we get the uh, the infiltration, um, you know, part of our infiltration and inflow study. This is one of the areas that was brought brought out in that study showing us this area. So um, it's one of the areas we'd like to, you know, since we have the money, it's in the money's were appropriated for this line. We'd like to uh, to move forward with it.
For the questions?
Not here.
Excuse me.
I'm still a little confused about the appropriation because I would think the major maintenance fund, this board author actually is is who spends the major maintenance fund, this board or the or the W P C A?
Well, you you would have to approve the purchase as all purchases, but the uh, the monies itself comes from, it was in the budget process that we would be taking the monies from. There would be a capital offset. We've done that for a number of years now. So cutting out the major maintenance fund was a capital offset. So we asked for it in our budget. Um, and then the monies, you know, whether they're they're coming from increasing the sewer use fees or being allocated from this major maintenance fund, these monies were asked to be allocated from the major maintenance fund. Moving forward, we might raise the sewer fees to uh, offset some of these costs that we don't deplete the major maintenance fund um, as we're moving forward on capital capital items.
Okay, now I get a thank you for that explanation. I mean, we're basically we're 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 doing the procuring of the national water main. Me and couple. So um, no further questions? I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with National Water Main Cleaning Company for a total of thirty two thousand one twenty, which includes a contingency of forty two hundred for the relining project of three hundred feet on on Main Street as described by Tiger. Second.
Second.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Hi. Thank you.
Number two, number five is uh, well, let's let's continue you is Alvy coming? Alvy done? So Tiger, we'll take a break from you and go back to uh, go back to the agenda.
Hello.
Why you go ahead and just briefly describe what this inter local agreement with Fairfield County Dispatch is?
Yes, um, basically the agreement is just rewriting our current one with Westports, the town of Westport to the regional dispatch center that Westport has moved to. That's combined with Fairfield. So we're um, the agreement just makes it a legal entity that our correspondence is with the Fairfield County Regional Dispatch versus the town of Westport, which we've been with for a number of years now. And this was written by Doug Lamonti, who's been um, you know, throughout throughout the whole process with Westport and Fairfield going through it.
Questions for Alvy? Is this in the old G E building?
Yes. Yep. That is correct.
And the town council will ratify it at the end of the month on the twenty seventh at their special meeting.
I'll be who serves on the control board?
Uh, Westports and Fairfield's police and fire chiefs and the director of their communications, actually the communications director, I don't think it's on the control board, but it's the Westport and and Fairfield Police and Fire Chiefs. We're we're considered a customer.
I see. Are we the only customer?
Currently, yes. So I've been involved with some of their meetings, but I'm not a control board member.
Is that something that you think you'd want to be? Or that we should be represented on the control board?
Uh, no, I don't feel um, we need to be uh, with just us going in there. It's, you know, it's pretty standard. We've been in the process. I don't think there's any decision making that we really need to do at their level.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, Robbie? Um, I move re. What are we actually doing here? We're reviewing or we're approving?
I I think ultimately the town council has to vote on it, but we just felt it was important to bring it through the B O S first.
Okay, and we're we're recommending its approval to the town council. So uh, I I move we approve this um, joined agreement uh, with respect to the inter local agreement Fairfield County Dispatch as described by Alby for the uh, fire dispatch services beginning March first, two thousand twenty three. Um, and we recommend this for approval by the town council. Second.
Second here.
All favor. Hi.
Bye.
Bye. Great. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, now Mr. Riley is up next. Good morning, Greg.
Thank you for taking up this item.
This is actually Tiger also Tiger.
Tiger's here. John Howe is here.
God, sure too.
Ellie Lenz is here. I've got uh, ready for all questions.
Yeah, so some some grant applications require authorization to apply. Others don't, but go ahead.
Correct. And and this one uh, in the application, which is to Connecticut Deep for a four part project to improve the trails in and around Waveney. Um, which uh, and the application asks for, you know, can you tell us the extent that the public has been engaged in the development of this project? So we know that the public is engaged in ongoing improvements to Waveney throughout just about every year. And you all approve budgets, et cetera, that include expenses for that. Uh, but this would be another way to show that I could say in the application that we have engaged the public through through you uh, this morning. So that's, that's, that's why I'm here. And this formally authorizes uh, would authorize the first selectmen to to pursue the money and execute the grant, you know, should we get the award?
Tiger, do you by any chance have the map?
Of of the locations?
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on, I'll pull it up.
Uh, so the four parts that I'll I'll just mention while Tiger's doing that, uh, a new trail would come in from the Y M C A to the Water Tower Fields uh, along the line of the Tennessee Gas Line. Following it some somehow. Uh, and then from not on top of it presumably. Um, and then there would be a new trail from Conrad Road to Jenny Am Meadow. A third part of this project would be a maintenance upgrade of the northeast section behind the high school and up to Farm Road. And the fourth part would be uh, planning study options for a buffer between the Merritt Parkway and the southern part of the trail. Something that the conservancy has recently talked about is something they'd like to achieve. Uh, and so this would help them fund that study, help the town fund that study. So that's, that's the plan.
And we have to come up with a hundred and twenty one thousand.
Correct. Twenty five percent match would be required. Uh, and so that is, that is correct.
But that would come out of our appropriated uh, Waveney Park Conservancy match program that we have.
We have that.
Right.
One twenty one.
So hopefully, uh.
That's not for me to say.
Well, wouldn't be a special appropriation because we're making that annual capital appropriation to match with the conservancy.
Right.
Um, John, I should have had you come up here as well because this is um really yours as well as Tigers. Tiger has put the map up.
What's the timing of this, Greg?
Timing of the grant is uh, it's due March first. So we have about nine days to to finalize it. I've I've been working on it for a little bit. Uh, the award, the award notifications I'd expect around June. Then uh, then there's a two year period of performance, they call it, or you know, time that they allow you to do the work. So they want to know that you can get it done in two years.
So we've been talking about some of these trails, um, especially the Conrad Road to Jenny him for a while and the the gas pipeline route, um, just to further expand the walkability of Wavety Park, including the part that is really not Wavety Park, but it's the Board of Education property on South Avenue.
Very well used section. You know, a lot of people go through that area and adding a trail up through the along the gas line will be a great addition to keep the loops going.
Be a nice connection from the Y M C A, I think also.
Yep. So how does that work at the Y M C A? Obviously they're across the road. So is the entrance going to be directly across from the Y M C A?
Or John can answer that?
The gas line is down just a little bit further than that, but right now there is a sidewalk coming across from the baseball field at Saks School to the Y right in that area. A crosswalk, I should have said, not a sidewalk.
That has one of those flashers.
Crosswalk, right.
One of those flashers.
No, it does not have a flasher.
No, it does. We just put it up.
Oh.
That was recent installation.
So you go through the crosswalk and then the entrance would actually be there to to get to the Jenny Am Meadow? Or?
Actually, that one's down further by Conrad Road.
Okay, that's the Conrad or the Y M C A one.
To the Water Tower Field.
One going up along the gas pipeline. The gas pipelines just a little ways down the trail. I doubt and Tiger matter, I doubt they put another crosswalk.
South there. The D O T would frown on an additional crosswalk. We had originally lined up that existing crosswalk with the the pit trail. It's called the pit. Uh, because it went down through a drainage um, area. Um, and that connects directly with the high school. So in essence, they're not going to allow us to put in a second crossing that close. So we'd have to use the existing crossing and then come down the trail system just slightly. Um, and then, you know, not not that long and then hit the uh, hit the the Tennessee Gas Pipeline easement and the trail there. Um, but I think I think we'd be better just to leave the crossing where it is. It was very difficult to get the crossing and then get the uh, R F B installed. Was a long process. So I'd rather not try to have the D O T move and they might look, they might frown on it because that's an area where they allowed it, the one twenty four to be widened slightly um, because of left hand turning traffic into the Y M C A. So they probably would not allow us to then put that crossing right in the area where they allowed uh, some widening of the roadway to accommodate a car having to pass someone queued up to make a left hand turn into the Y.
That's great. That actually wasn't my question. The question was actually on South Avenue, the entrance into this new uh, trail. Is that entrance actually happened right there? You know, or do you have to go down to the entrance at Waveney? There's actually in from the sidewalk.
For Conrad or the Y M C A?
Both.
Both. See, I think the point Tiger.
You come straight across the street. Right? The the plan is to come straight across the street at Conrad. Make an additional crossing there, another mid block crosswalk there to come across for Conrad. For the Y M C A one or for the one on the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, we would use the existing crossing at the Saks Baseball Field. And then you would have to then navigate across.
Now, the point is actually there's.
How would you enter the park?
That's that's what I'm asking.
You're at that point.
There's a couple little spurs off, you know, and since they they bring you to the road, which is kind of dangerous. We probably ought to discourage the use of these spurs by having right by sort of closing them off.
The one at Conrad Road was, you know, that was improved because people were just cutting through there.
Right. And that might, you know, the state might go for a flasher down there at Conrad Road because that is a significant distance away from the Y. But that, you know, crossings, I I do it occasionally. It's not always the safest thing to cross South Avenue there to get take crossover to the trail. So.
We did, yeah, way back when we did the original trails and did a couple of the entrances out, we did eradicate a couple of ones that people had created. Um, we did improve, as John said, the one at at Conrad, only because people were using it and it was directly across from Conrad. But then there was several others that we we took took out. Especially when we created the one at the pit across from Saks, we took out a couple of other spurs to try to make sure that to try to have everyone come through one crossing.
Now for the questions? I think we can dispense with the reading of the resolution, but I move we approve the resolution to authorize the first selectmen to apply for a Connecticut Deep Recreation Trails Grant for four hundred eighty four thousand dollars to improve Wavingy Park Trails as described by Greg and John and Tiger and um the resolution is set forth here. We'll put it in the minutes.
A second?
Further discussion?
Not here.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, back to Tiger for the balance of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. The uh, this next item, excuse me, it's a for the purchase of a of a vehicle for the health department. Uh, we went to Carl Chevrolet for a quote, um, excuse me, for a new Chevy Trailblazer, a twenty twenty three Chevy Trailblazer for thirty three thousand five twenty five. There's money available in the health department budget on the capital side uh, for this purchase. Um, and then Jen has monies in this year fiscal twenty four or request for another vehicle. That one will be an E V similar to what we just purchased for the other land use departments. Um, and then at that point in time, we'll uh, we'll trade in the existing health department vehicle. Um, since they only have one now for three people, they'll have two for the three people and then we'll um, replace that second one and then trade that one out next year.
Questions or?
Tiger, what what's the list price on this vehicle?
That I don't know. I got the I got the quote, you know, at thirty two, four eighty five. And then there's a couple of couple of ads mats and things like that um, that brought it to the thirty three, five twenty five. They typically give us um, numbers that are in the Chevy buying program, there's a purchase agreement, national purchase agreement. Um, so they typically give us a better price than than the list.
And and the reason why we're not, I thought we were doing E V for all of our new vehicles.
Probably, yeah, we're 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 changing over. Um, uh, the health department was looking for something a little bit beefier, um, a little bit, you know, an all wheel drive vehicle um, to carry some of the materials she had for certain clinics and other things that she had. So this is the vehicle that um, that they looked at and requested. But going forward, the next one will be um, an E V. So the second one for strictly for inspections and and travel around town will be a will be an E V. We're trying to move ourselves slowly into the E V market to see exactly, you know, how it pans out. Like I said, we have two now. They're both been well received um, by the land use departments. We had a training from Carl Chevrolet last week on how to operate, how to charge different, you know, things about the vehicle themselves and and they're working well so far, but it's we're we're only weeks into the into the endeavor.
For the questions? I move to approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Carlos Chevrolet for the purchase of a two thousand twenty three Chevrolet Trailblazer in the amount of thirty three thousand five twenty five for the health department. Inspections, inspectors. Um, as described by Tiger, second.
Second here.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. This next item is for, excuse me, for materials for the front parking lot of Saks, I should call the front circle. Actually, it's a we did some work last year on a sidewalk extension or um, installation that comes straight down to the front of the school with a nice patio that they've been using for outdoor classrooms and for areas for the kids to um, gather outside out of doors specifically after uh, the success during COVID, I'll call it success because they realized the outdoor classrooms were were a hit and the kids liked to be outside was much better for um, for them and and overall learning. So this is to actually take care of the interior portion of the circle, putting granite curb around the outside. Um, we have some drainage improvements going through there, then we'll repave it and re stripe it. Uh, so I went to William Stone for requests for the material. It came in at twenty three thousand three fourteen twenty two. I added a contingency again of around five hundred dollars just to make up the difference between what we ordered and actually get delivered because it's usually tens of a foot off um, for twenty three thousand eight fourteen twenty two. The reason we're doing it now early is because they're telling us, get your orders in because each one of the granite companies um, basically maxed out on their production. And uh, if I order it now, I'm looking at a July date, um, which will hit perfectly for uh, work at the school. But you know, the the further we delay, the it'll start pushing us out even further. So we we request the permission for this purchase.
Questions?
I guess I'm going to have the same question about bricks. So you can uh, answer both of them of the granite. So when we look at materials going forward, say for the upcoming year, if you feel that there's a good price or better efficiency, any reason why you don't sort of do a bulk order?
The uh, well, because if I do, it's hard to have them bleed it out of the out of the as far as what we're trying to do is maximize each truck. Okay, so I don't want to have a combined order of everything and then I'm short loading a couple of different things and then they give me everything and I don't have any place to store it.
Okay.
So because I get into the fact of the order says, okay, you're gonna, I'm gonna deliver it. I'm gonna deliver it to one location, might be three spots. Um, so we try to do it by a case by case basis also in the fact that they um, these pieces are specific for Saks, meaning that they come in numbered and it's basically a puzzle that they put together. Uh, there's a, there's a, there's a plan. That's actually a laid out plan um, that tells them exactly what pieces to put down because they're they uh, have radius pieces associated with it. They're not all straight pieces. They're all, you know, majority of them are curved um, and of a different shape. So it works for us to to order one off on each one uh, and then maximize the load by taking in um, just additional straight pieces to uh, to avoid the short load.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? You know, you're not related to William Stone, are you? I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a country with William Stone in the amount of twenty three thousand. I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with William Stone in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight fourteen thirty-two, which includes a contingency of five hundred dollars for the purchase of granite curbing at this, for the Saks school front parking circle as described by Tiger. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Okay, Tiger. Next is the.
This is for, uh, excuse me, for bricks, very similar, um, situation. The, um, as far as the pre-order. We'll be looking at getting these, uh, sometime in the May, June, July, uh, timeframe. Um, this one is actually a combined project, so it's, it's, it's both for downtown and for, um, excuse me, for the area along train station bricks there. Um, these are easier because it come in and they're palletized, right? So it's much easier to have them delivered into the highway department and then palletize them off. So I can combine projects together. But the overall price was eleven thousand four thirty-four fifty. I added a contingency of five hundred hours for eleven thousand nine thirty-four fifty. Um, and again, it's for, uh, those two projects and the, the timing will work pretty well for us. Excuse me.
Any questions? No questions about, I have a question, Tiger. When does the, uh, when does the Elm Street project resume downtown?
Well, this is, that's the, um, the granite that we ordered and the brick, this is what it's for. So it's really going to look at, I have some, um, I have remaining materials for the north side. This is all for the south side. So the south side would be sometime in the summer, which I think will be the best time to do that in the downtown areas, they, after the sidewalk sale and before everyone returns. Um, but we are looking at doing the northern side, the moment Alden Bailey transitions from out, uh, exterior work to interior work and, and we, uh, finalize the, um, the grades that are required for the interior work to transition to the exterior work. Right now we're determining exactly what the floor height is going to be inside the playhouse. We think it's going to raise by about four inches. If I raise the floor height in the playhouse by about four inches to make the grades right, I've got to raise the floor, the exterior height by about four inches to make the threshold to match. At that point in time, I'll know exactly what I need to do on the outside and I can continue that work. That's one of the reasons why we, we waited and we're very close to having a final determination as to that. And the moment that that happens, then we can start looking at doing that exterior work and finishing the outside to try to make that sidewalk a little bit better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Paramount Stone for a total of eleven thousand nine thirty-four fifty, which includes a five hundred dollar contingency for the purchase of sidewalk bricks for the various projects in town as described by Tiger. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye. Bye.
Okay, Bill's joining us.
Uh, Bill.
Playoffs, oh, this is the two twenty Elm renovations.
Morning.
Right. So on this one, we went out to bid. We received five separate bids. Um, for this work for the renovation of two twenty Elm Street for the BOE itself. Excuse me, we, uh, we took the two lowest bidders Viking and Munger, met with them, um, interviewed them with the architect and, uh, members of the, of, uh, from the board of ed, Dan Clark, um, and Scott Olson, both their, uh, facilities managers. Um, asked them for their, um, ideas on value engineering and then went back and, and, uh, tabulated the project forward and, uh, the, um, the overall uh, request is for one million five seventeen seven seventy-four is the project. We added a twenty percent contingency line because there's, there's some unknowns on the flooring, things of that nature, um, for three oh three five fifty-four for a total of one million eight twenty-one three twenty-eight. Uh, the funds are currently available from a, from a recent, um, um, allotment from the board of finance and the town council.
Questions?
Um, Tiger, when you mentioned a recent allotment, you mean in this year's current budget?
Unauthorization.
Unauthorization, yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this what we expected, Tiger, in terms of the, the all-in figure?
I, that, that we, uh, we had originally anticipated them coming in and, and getting a feel for the, uh, for the offices and then renovating.
Right.
Um, but this is probably a better, um, take on how to do it as far as, uh, getting it all done before. And then there are, then the disturbance, especially since they have, you know, the launch program and other programs running out of there, very difficult to, um, try to disturb them midstream. Um, so in the end, uh, yeah, I'd say that this is, uh, this brings their facility up to the standards that they had over at, uh, at their previous facility. And it's, uh, since we utilize their architect and, and, um, their request, it's exactly what they want. So I, I think it's a good fit.
Just, just to add onto that question, give us a, just a figure of what's the total amount that we're expecting and, and how much is, was expected for this particular line item or was it broken out that way?
We had, we had, it, yeah, the bid is quite long and lengthy and, and it detailed out. There were some surprises, you know, as far as, and I wouldn't call it surprises, but you know, some items that were a little bit heavier than others, glass, things of that nature. But then to the BOE's credit, they took out some of that, some of those requests as far as, uh, areas that they wanted to have glass and, and, um, changed it to, uh, to save money. In the end, you know, Bill can speak a little bit further on, um, you know, the overall breakdown of every single item, but, uh, we have a two-page, three-page bid list of everything that, of how they broke out their pricing and how we, how we determined the final cost.
So again, at, at, at a future date, perhaps if we can just get a sense of all of the expected renovation costs, anything that we had to do to, to basically bring two twenty Elm up to speed to have the board of education operate in there. The total cost, and again, just if we can look at it maybe in the next couple of months or so that we could just get a sense of what was the total project and this particular, all of the line items in between. Cause we, we've approved a number of things in the last six months. Uh, and so I just want to get a sense of where we are in terms of the, the entire project and then how each line item sort of, and, and maybe it's just half a dozen line items, but just want to get a sense.
No, we haven't actually, we've only functioned on this twice. We, we authorized the, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year ago when we bonded the purchase of the building. We anticipated, you know, that the renovations were going to, um, be more modest than, than the superintendent ultimately decided. And then the board, uh, the town council and the board of finance authorized a second bond authorization in Jan, in February.
The only other expenses we incurred were the infill of the stairs that we
Right.
required to do as part of the agreement.
Okay.
Um, that's approximately.
So three so far?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, I think somewhere around there. I could get the exact numbers and email to you.
And we expected that could cost a hundred thousand dollars and only cost thirty thousand dollars. So.
Well, good. Okay.
We can put together, we'll, we'll send you this bid list so that you can see the breakdown.
Yes, that's. How many more projects do we have till we reach completion of two twenty Elm?
Well, this is it.
This is it. Okay.
Yeah, this is it. This is, um, um, we get approval today. Um, I already have the contracts ready to be signed and they're ready to get going.
Okay.
And, um, they're saying sixteen weeks. So we just threw seventeen weeks on the contract just for a little cushion there. That gets us into July-ish, July around there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, most of these materials appear to be readily available. Um, even the, uh, some of the glass we are doing is not the, uh, um, rated glass that you would require like an entrance. We took that out.
Right.
So the glass is about eight weeks out, which works out good. A lot of it being framed out and ready for an interior glass, which in pretty good shape.
Building is currently occupied. Is that correct?
Empty. First floor, the second floor is occupied. First floor is empty. That's our floor.
Right. That's, but is that going to be any sort of disturbance?
Out, we worked out, um, with the contractor to work off hours on the demolition phase, all the noisy stuff.
Right.
And their normal hours will be from five AM to I think two PM, uh.
That was a request from the contractor. They actually prefer to come in early. Um, their men prefer to come in early because they beat the traffic coming in and then they beat the traffic going out. So they actually asked for an early start and early leave, which will actually help us with our, with, um, the tenant up above. And then they suggested, we wanted, but they also suggested and understood the fact that demolish certain demolition phases would have to be done off hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't considered an upcharge at the time as well. So they were, they were looking at the fact that they'll make the men work Saturday to Wednesday, say, and that's their forty hours for the week. And there's no overtime charges for that. And they give them Thursday, Friday off to do whatever they want. So they were very accommodating on trying to help us understand that we have, we have a tenant on the second floor.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Viking Construction in the total amount of a million eight twenty-one three twenty-eight for the, uh, two twenty Elm Street renovation project as described by Tiger and Bill. Second?
Second.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Bye. Bye.
Thank you, Bill. You're, you're up for the playoffs.
Next item is the playhouse theater, you know, purchase of the electrical equipment. Um, there's not all the equipment. This is a switchgear that has some time to, uh, in the supply chain is a little tough to get.
Someday I want you to explain what switchgear means.
It's all the big breakers where the power comes in, all those big breakers up there, the big scary ones. That's the big stuff there. So, um, we're looking to do a direct purchase right from F and M, um, electric. They've worked with our, um, uh, engineer and our, um, electrical, um, people who are going to be doing electrical work over here as part of the contract with Alden Bailey. And, um, so this is a, um, no markup on this. This is our cost. Uh, F and M electric's been fabulous over the years with the town, the candy and their pricing. Uh, we'd like to move forward with this, uh, switchgear. Uh, and, and I must say that this number is going to change and actually go down a little bit. Uh, we're still tweaking a couple of things, but I needed to, I can't, I, I'm trying not to lose two more weeks. So I'd like to get at least nineteen thousand seven fifty with the contingency approved. Um, and we just got the final cut sheets on it and it'll be ready to be released this afternoon. I believe there might be maybe two thousand dollar savings on it somewhere around there. But we also have the contingency in there because of our trucking companies and freight. It keeps changing the numbers. So I want to make sure I got covered on freight and anything else that may be a surprise to us. It's not uncommon these days, unfortunately.
Any questions?
So is this a fairly large item that requires freight that F and M doesn't cover?
Six foot by, I think, three feet, like two feet deep. It's a big, it's a big box with all the breakers and stuff in it.
The, 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 uh, F and M doesn't cover delivery charge?
This, this is all in. Um, the only freight charge we may see in additional this would be from the manufacturer to F and M. F and M is not going to charge us to deliver it.
I see. Okay.
The, the switchgear in essence changes where the supply comes from, right? So that's all you're looking at. You know, in essence, if, if it's coming from the street, it's one thing. If it's coming from the generator, it's another. That's what, yeah, that's what you're looking at.
Oh, I get it. The emergency generator requires the switching.
Well, that's different switching in to build your end. It's, it's, um.
Do we have an emergency generator for the playoffs now?
No.
Not going to be connected to the town hall generator.
No. Um, most of these, unfortunately, a lot of the, uh, components of switchgear are not manufactured in the States. Uh, some of it comes from Mexico, some of it comes from China, Taiwan. Um, at this point here is once you put the water in, they'll figure out who's going to get it to us quicker and, and go that route.
Okay. No further questions? I approve the request from Public Works to enter if we purchase a green with F and M electric supply for the, uh, total amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for switchgear.
Second here.
Um, all in favor?
Bye.
All right, next item, similar to what we just talked about. This is going to be, uh, a purchase of the mechanical equipment. This is going to be your air handlers and your condenser or air conditioning equipment only. Um, the only difference with this one here is that we, we're, it's all train equipment. The engineer spec'd out all train equipment. Um, where we want to purchase it through Eastern Mechanical Services, who's going to be the contractor installing it. This is a pass through with no markup from Eastern. They're just acting as a pass through for us. The reason being is that we want Eastern Mechanical to take ownership of that equipment until it's assigned over to us as the final owner. This puts all the liability on them for warranties and what have you. Um, it's, it's a little trickier if we bought it, then assigned it to them. Then I'd have wires involved to change agreements, what have you. So this is pretty much, um, standard procedures in the business world when you, when we do direct purchasing like this. And we just want to get this going. Again, this has got a long lead time on it. Unfortunately, two of the units were just saying maybe October.
Hmm.
So that's why we don't want to get this moving right along.
So like the police department with the playoffs is basically a brand new building inside, um,
Yeah, it's a.
With the exterior historic shell.
Yeah, you know, they just, you know, uh, building codes and energy codes change quite a bit and they just start changing October. So we got a couple of extra things added to it that we have to do by code now. Um, the building was nowhere near code compliant prior to us going in and renovating this. And that was fine because it was code compliant at the time they did it. But once you go in to do the work, you have to bring things up to code. And because of air conditioning, uh, EPA, it changed a lot of the regulations on the R twenty-two, which is now just totally forbidden. It's definitely, you can't buy it, they don't make it. And if your air conditioning unit breaks down, you've got to change it to the new four-ten. Fortunately, air handlers doesn't accommodate those type of coils. So you've got to change your whole system. And we're victim to that in a lot of other buildings and we're just trying to get as much we can out of the old, older stuff before we have to make a big expense like this. Um, because of this, we have to do the complete HVA system over at the, uh, playhouse and meet the new fresh air requirements, um, which is under scrutiny big time now. Obviously with the COVID pandemic, everything, they want to make sure we are achieving the six changes an hour that's required by code. So, um, we're, we're doing everything by the book. We're not going to cut no corners on this one.
Anyone?
On this one, we're not going to cut. Not that we did any of those ones, but.
We'll edit that out of the, out of. So, Bill, you've been doing a fabulous job. As I've said before, I mean, this project is kind of, uh, an amazing, uh, collaboration with the, uh, engineers and the, uh, architects and everything. And I really want to compliment Bill for orchestrating this whole, the whole program design build. We've never done it before, but it's we're trying to hit that target for October.
Trying. We're, 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 we're doing like a lot of other people out there, rethinking how things were, um, put together. You know, instead of, you know, starting from the main equipment, working our way out, we're going to work out from the way out to the way into the equipment and hopefully be ready for and put it in place and tie it in.
Hmm.
Um, this is pretty much what a lot of the contractors doing in order to keep things going. I mean, you just can't sit around waiting. You have to figure out other ways to do it and then put the equipment in as it comes.
I, I have a, a, thank you, Bill. I have an accounting question actually, Anne. So I, it generally when you buy equipment and you pretty much know what the cost is going to be, seems like you, there's not, except for shipping, I, I understand that the freight costs and so forth, and maybe that's what's included here. But a twenty percent contingency on equipment that you already know, I get project costs, you add a contingency. But actually purchasing equipment where you've already negotiated, here's the number and so forth, to add twenty percent to that, again, unless it's for freight and it's just like an accounting issue that's not required when you have actual equipment.
So.
Am I, you're saying no or yes? Okay. Unless there's something else that.
Right. Okay. This is a question really for Bill as to why we, why.
Well, the reason why I'm putting the contingency on it at twenty percent is that as we get into their queue to start designing and building these things, um, something can happen, you know, with, if China or some of these parts also they don't become available. I have to go to a different manufacturer. I have to change up in the middle of everything to a different, uh, whether it be manufacturer style equipment or something. I just want to have the flexibility to do so where, uh, or I was in additional time. Um, and for my, for all my own personal accounting, how I keep track of the project, I put all this money aside so that I know that if I run into this problem, there's money available. I don't run out of money. I, I try to keep track of it that way. So I, I, it's hard to guarantee anything anymore, even when they say they guarantee it. They'll guarantee it. They just don't guarantee when. And if the equipment order and if one of those pieces say, well, in the supply chain it gets held up and I'm saying, yeah, you'll get it in sixteen months. Well, that's not acceptable. I have to re-figure this thing out and try to move forward.
We also keep a running tabulation that the, the selectman actually asked this, uh, several months ago of every project that we request a contingency on and then exactly what pans out um, in the end. So we have that tabulation. We can kind of, you know, update it for you and then provide it back to you to show you exactly where we are and how we have been doing, you know, our, our track record, so to speak, on each, each appropriation. Um, and the contingency allotted and whether or not that contingency has been utilized or not. So we'll, we'll update that for you and bring it to a, a future, uh, selectman's meeting for review.
Did you misspeak? You said the selectman requested that.
No, that you actually asked that, Kevin. You wanted it.
First of all.
No, I think, I think that'd be very helpful. That's great. I, I just think that when we look at equipment and I, I understand what you're saying. I totally get that. It just seems twenty percent is
Yes.
is high.
But again, we're not, well, all they're doing is authorizing an amount, uh, because given this project as being so fluid, and by the way, we have a partner here who wants to make sure we're, because they're sharing in the cost. Ultimately, um, if, if this goes over budget and we're on budget and we're, and we're, uh, he needs the flexibility to be able to, um, order equipment and make changes as he describes, so.
Yeah, if we went traditional, you'd think that, you know, typically. Yeah, if we went traditional, you'd think that, you know, typically this, you wouldn't see any of this, this would all be part of the general contract, you want to bid traditionally. And then we add contingencies to that, which
Part of the project, totally get that.
It's kind of like a different view.
A little different, but I get it. Don't agree, but I get it.
Okay, uh I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a purchase agreement with Eastern Mechanical Services for the HBAC equipment uh is described by Bill for a total of three twenty-four nine ninety-four, which includes a twenty percent contingency for this uh for the equipment purchase. Second.
Second.
All favor.
Yeah, thank you.
Back to you, Tiger, for safety markings.
So this next request is uh getting out ahead of of projects that we'll be doing in um late June and July. Uh we're right now um discussing the actual work, the microthin overlay, cave seal and crack seal, but associated with that is um work associated with uh removing the lines um so we can put a cave seal down or or a uh microthin overlay and then restriping. Uh once that work is completed, I wanted to make sure that we got into safety markings queue, um since they're quite busy. And last year, um there was difficulty in in uh getting inside their queue, so I wanted them to be aware of the work that's being done. So I asked to request a requested a quote for them for all the work. I think um it's part of your package, you had the road listing of every road that's being touched and uh the quantities or estimated quantities on it. So we have a uh a total of eighty-four thousand two fifty-five fifty-six. I added a contingency of twelve six fifty. The contingency itself is because each one of these numbers is an estimated quantity as far as how long that line is. The moment that they go one foot longer, it's going to cost me fifty-two cents to eighty-eight cents long uh more uh for a total of ninety-six nine oh five fifty-six. Excuse me, safety markings was a little bitter on the CROG procurement contract. There's no state bid at present. State will be going out for another bidding uh hopefully soon, but uh underneath the CROG procurement contract, these uh these numbers were were part of that. And I would like to go um forward with this contract and and um get safety markings on board for uh for some work in the June-July timeframe.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Safety Markings for a total about ninety-six thousand nine oh five fifty-six as described by Tiger, which includes the contingency um for the uh summertime striping and marking of roads as Tiger described. Second.
Second.
All favor, I. Okay.
Thank you.
Transfer station containers.
So this next one up, I'm uh presenting for Donnie. Um we went to Easter, East Coast Containers for um request for um purchase, they came in at eleven thousand seven hundred. We added a contingency seventeen fifty-five for delivery and uh metals cost um at the time when they uh go to create the uh the container itself for a total of thirteen four fifty-five. This is to replace two of our sixteen yard containers at the transfer station that have been in daily use since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh we have a, we have a capital request in the fiscal twenty-four budget to replace the remaining four. We're able to uh scrape some money together and get and uh be able to purchase two of these out of our operating budget from this year, two of the most needed ones. And we'd like to uh go forward and have this uh and purchase these containers so we can put them into use.
Do we sell the scrap or do they take them as trade or?
They'll take them as trade and scrap them out in the end. They're they're beyond repair.
Any questions? Move with approve this request from Public Works to purchase two sixteen yard containers from Eastern coast containers in the total amount of thirteen thousand four fifty-five as described by Tiger. Second. All favor. Now Tiger, if you go back to the new Canaan rink uh staffing expenses item that we added, or is that?
We can we do that now? Okay, so this is a um a request from uh NC Rink Inc. To be reimbursed for their staffing requirements, um something that we uh inadvertently missed when we came forward with uh the blanket purchase orders earlier in the year for um for the rink itself. Um so we estimated the staffing expenses based upon their payroll at approximately seven hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars a month for two and a half months. Added a half a month contingency on the top of it. Um so it was eighteen seven fifty for the estimated amount. Thirty-seven fifty for the contingency for a total of twenty-two five hundred. Um and this money will be coming out of the grant that uh NC Rink received uh from the DEB.
Questions? So we're actually dispersing this grant uh for them, um but we're reimbursing ourselves for, we've already
reimbursing the rink. Uh the rink actually staffing, we've been there invoicing us for us to pay NC Rink back for um for the monies that they have so we can utilize the grant. The grant was given to the town of New Canaan and we have to disperse it, so it's part of this dispersal was to reimburse NC Rink Inc. for the expenses for their staffing.
So just to be clear though, these these staffing people are employees, part-time employees of the NC Rink nonprofit, not of the town of New Canaan.
Correct.
Okay. I move where we prove this request from Public Works on behalf, on behalf of NC Rink for reimbursement of estimated staffing expenses in the uh total amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I don't understand the reason for contingency here for it's all.
Only because I, they, right now, they've given me um they've invoiced me for a portion of the of the time already. They haven't invoiced me for the entire time. At the time I wrote the memo, you know, we were anticipating the rink being kind of continued a little bit further. Now they're starting to break it down. Um it was really just to make sure that I had everything covered, so I didn't have to come back. That that that's strictly where it was, was I I did, I I had to take their estimated payroll for what they had provided for me and then forecast that out, and that's the reason why I added it. And it was also uh in keeping with the prior format for the other purchases that we had for electricity and other things whereby we didn't know that it's that extra half month, whether we'd be able to extend it or not.
Thank you. And they will close Wednesday?
It's closed now. Well, it was as of yes, yesterday was their last day.
Okay.
Um in operation, they're going to start breaking it down and I'm sure that, you know, they'll have some staffing requirements through that as well, as they try to break it down and clean the area up. And then I asked the highway department in the parks department to go in and and help out after the highway department bring their sweeper in, we'll sweep it all up, clean it all up and then um we uh we're actually, we whatever request for a contractor or quote from safety markets to come in and strike the lot. So we can strike the lot and then open it back up again to uh for the rest of the parks uh time.
Okay. So I move, we approve this request from Public Works to uh reverse NC Rink for the staffing expenses. Did I already say this? For a total amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars? Second.
Second.
All favor, I.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tiger. Feel better.
Thank you.
Contracts um on the tablets? Any questions?
Just, I've just one actually, it's tied to the NC Rink um and for small amount, is is that the same thing, a reimbursement uh amount?
Which was this one, Kathleen?
I beg your pardon. Contracts on, it's Belden Hill Landscape Contractors, make uh materials and labor for the uh NC Rink. And and the thing I was interested in is I I assume it's the same kind of reimbursement, maybe I don't have that right.
This is we're paying direct um to Belden Hill. So that was, I I believe around twenty-seven hundred dollars for some conduit installation that was done. They had
Do we get reimbursed for that from?
It's coming out of the grant, so because of the grant was written to the town, as we spoke about before, we were, we have to procure all the work for them. Belden Hill did some work um on the initial rank installation. Um unfortunately, they had invoiced NC Rink, they need to invoice the town. They need to give us an estimate of work first, so this is, we're we're catching up uh on our paperwork for that. So I had Kevin sign the estimate of work. Then we'll come forward with a P O. Unfortunately, the work's already been performed because they had to do it to set the rink up, but this is just the catch-up.
I see, okay.
Excuse me.
No further question?
No.
Legal fees review. I move for approve the legal fees on the tablets.
I just had a question on legal, so we've reached our budget amount and we've got four more months of the fiscal year. What do we do in terms of the process? We know we're going to exceed something and I'll just, you know, just if you sort of annualize it, uh maybe another hundred and twenty, hundred twenty-five thousand. Maybe in legal fees, just if you assume a a sort of a monthly rate. How does, how do we go about just?
That's why we have a three hundred thousand dollar contingency.
I can't hear you, Ian, I'm sorry. You're going to take that through the contingency. Okay, so three hundred thousand, well, that's what we set up every year, about three hundred thousand.
We rarely use it.
Rarely use it. Is that right? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. I gotta get a mic back there. Make it easier.
Unlike, unlike the energy expenses, we did a special appropriation for.
So, yeah, we haven't touched it yet to date. We've had two issues that we needed to cover, but we had other funds. So we had the electrical one, which is coming from the special projects, which we had um reimbursements from Aquarium from years past, so that's covering that one. We have two twenty elm, which is the monthly um monthly uh maintenance that we have on that, that's getting covered by the bonding interest that won't hit in this year. So that we're not touching contingency to cover any of those items. So the two items that will be coming in front will be the legal uh fees and the permitting program that um uh Open Gov that we're look at, looking at to have all the permitting process, you need help building. Um and that will be asked to come out of contingencies.
Actually, the reality is though, that we could, by by the time June comes around, we may not even use the contingency because we always underspend our budget. And and we made you go to another source of fund.
We could, yeah, there could be, we're, you know, savings and salary lines, things like that.
But you have to identify the line item that you're taking it from, right?
Yes, right, yes. And that's, I I've been going through, right now I'm going through all the um uh personnel uh line items to see where we have savings with all the changes we've had with retirements and new people coming on.
And that's what the border finance does, transfers, so.
Yes.
For that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
So I move, we approve the legal fees.
A second.
All favor, I. Overpayments, there's one real estate and a couple automobile. We we approve the refunds of the tax overpayments, second.
Second.
All favor, I. That brings us to uh wrap up.
I find that um selectmen's comments, I actually tune into the uh the town council and the board of finance so I can hear your comments. Because you always give a great overview of things that are happening, and so uh I don't know if you want to share those things with us here at our selectmen's comments. I I had
I I didn't do, I wasn't asked to do comments this month, so to the town council or the board of finance.
Oh, you weren't? Oh, okay, too bad. You got a lot to say. Uh I just had, actually, uh one of our uh constituents had reached out and uh was inquiring about uh something that we had under contract several months ago. I don't, and I know that you had walked through town. This was for for the historic district that was being considered. And we didn't pay forward the uh the contract fee because we didn't come forward and you had gone through the the um the tour. I don't know, where did, where does that stand? I didn't have any answer for them. If we go forward with that, uh looking into a historic district.
Ten days ago, I asked Neely Sticknoff where it stood and I think I got an email, but I don't know what
Okay.
What it says, so I'd be happy to uh share it.
Okay, that'd be great. And that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, with that, I move readjourn at eight nine thirty-five AM. Second.
Second.
All favor. Okay. You got a minute, John?